Like to call the Smithfield Town Council meeting to order. Thursday, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. There were no votes taken in the executive session. Right now, we are going to begin the sound of the end. Now, there's going to be an extra session votes. There were none for Brad. But this meeting will be fruitful and productive, strengthening our bonds as a team and equip us to achieve and overshare our goals. Thank you for the opportunity and guidance and peaceful and forward discussion. Salute and applause.
I would like to thank the guests, Mr. Paul, Mr. Mike, and Sir Eric, and Sir Eric, whom I stand for, which stands on my nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Emergency evacuation and health unification.
In the event that the town council chambers has to be evacuated, there are two exits. One to my right, you'll see the exit sign at the doorway that leads to the side of the building. Another exit to the rear of the town council chambers. Out the exit immediately to your right is a stairwell leading out to the front. In the event of emergency, do not use the elevator. Ladies' room and men's room directly out the back doorway of the town council chambers. Men's room on the right, ladies' room up the stairs on the left.
Thank you, Chief. Number five presentation, Mr. Al Constantino, twenty-twenty-one, Charter Review Commission. Mr. Constantino.
Good evening, council members, council president, solicitor, our town manager, our town clerk. I have certain packets here, very brief, by the way. If you don't want them up, I'm just going to reference. It's just A, B, C, and D. Before I start, I'd like to state that a couple of weeks ago, when I realized it was going to be on the agenda for this evening, I visited the town clerk's office. Lynn and I went in the back room looking for the paperwork on the previous two charters where I was chair. And it's not the first time we couldn't find them. And we've just felt they were maybe misfiled somewhere else. And then I was out of town, out of state. And then I came back on a Saturday. And then Monday, the first thing I did, I went to see Lynn, and she found a box because she's good at finding things. So that was the two thousand eight Charter Review Commission, of which I was the first one that I was on, and I was the chair. And then we didn't find the paperwork yet on the two thousand twenty. But I'm staring at three people that were involved in it. You know, Thomas Winfield, Mike Ionardi, two council people that were on the Charter Review Commission, and the attorney, Anthony Cologne. He was the solicitor, and he participated in all the meetings. So that being said, I'd like to state that what I'm about to present to you, it's just not about the charter. It's about the town of Smithfield, our government, and the council. And I'm going to bring us some items that pertain to the council and irregardless of the charter. So if you look at A, you're going to see that this was in two thousand eight. And I'm going to call out about in two thousand eight, we had two old war horses on the Charter Review Commission, Walter Kane and John Emmon. Except now I'm one of them. I'm an old horse, warhorse. And I just wanted to mention about Walter Kane. His institutional knowledge was unbelievable because Walter was the Rhode Island State Court Administrator and clerk of Rhode Island Supreme Court for approximately twenty-five years. It's a lot of knowledge there of how the state runs, and he was instrumental. And I asked Trish Williams to come here tonight because I just mentioned her name for a reason. In two thousand eight, you're going to see, we thought we did an excellent job on the charter. As soon as we were charged with charter review, I was told, just get a few items because if you get too many, they won't pass. Well, you know, when you try to do something and you see something else, it's hard to avoid it. So when we were all said and done, and I'll probably repeat it because I had her in here, we had thirty-one proposed amendments to the charter. Twenty-nine of them got passed out of thirty-one in two thousand eight. And I thought we did an excellent job. But we didn't do a perfect job. And then many years later, I'm chair of the Charter Review Commission again, this last one, and we're going along. And Trish reads something. She says, what the hell is this all about? And I'm going to read to you what she read to us in two thousand eight. Section C four point one zero, welfare director. There shall be a director of welfare appointed by the town manager to serve at the manager's pleasure. The director shall have all the powers and duties relating to the poor, needy, N-E-E-D-Y, independent persons. And we were all taken back by it because this has been in the charter for years and years and years. And in two thousand eight, it wasn't nineteen sixty. And we're looking to improve the charter. And we did it in two thousand eight. And nobody saw it because obviously she could just look through the trees. so I'm going to read what was put in after Trish brought this up as what we have today. And something like this is more important to me than anything else we ever did. And we didn't do it, she did it. Four point oh nine, Director of Human Services, amended in two thousand twenty. There shall be a Director of Human Services appointed by the town manager to serve at the town manager's pleasure. The director should have all the powers and duties relating to those in need, not needy, in need, and such related functions as may be required now and hereunder, which may be assigned by the town manager. So it's things like this that make our community better. And it had nothing to do with trying to figure out all the heavy hitters stuff. But I just wanted to bring that up, and I commend her for it. I'm going to also, for two thousand twenty, signal out Paul Santucci and Michael Ionardi for the work that they did that was over my head. And I'm going to get to that in a few minutes, but I just didn't want to forget it. And you're going to see in here that this commission members of research was Thomas Delmar from Bryant University and Thomas Pagorini from Bryant University. They were two interns. And I went up to Bryant, at the time, with Bryant College. And they gave assignment to interns. And they just worked and never stopped working. So during the entire process, commission research members, Thomas Delmar and Thomas Pagorini, provided the commission with the cross-reference of home rule charters in fourteen communities. So we went out and we got since two thousand eight, we got charters from fourteen communities throughout the state, and some that had the demographics close to what we have. And so there was fourteen home charters of fourteen communities similar to the demographics of Smithfield, additional charters, the American League of Cities and Towns, and the model charter addition eight. And Rhode Island court cases applicable to charters were part of our review process. These two fellows worked at home. When they went away for the weekend, they lived out of state. They did work at home because part of their work, as I say here in the statement of appreciation, and at the time, we appreciated, it's the appreciation to town manager Dennis Finley and to Robin Kelly, who was our recording clerk. But Tom Delmar and Todd Pagorini, Bryant University interns, who provided our research for charter change recommendations. Without their work, this commission would have never had completed our charge on time. Their work ethic and participation discussions weren't beyond our experiences. And what we did with them is, when we were going to come up with a charter item to speak about, I would call them and saying, grab everything from all the other charters, wherever they are, and we want them for Monday night's meeting. So they would process all this information so we could make comparisons to other communities. And then one thing we did is the minority ruled, not the majority, very rare. And what I mean by that is if any one commission member wanted to put an item in the charter for discussion and to vote on, it happened. We didn't try to get a majority to see what we should try to talk about. It only took one person. And sometimes it took somebody from the audience that I'm going to get to in a few minutes that came up with something and say, you know what? Let's look at that. So that's how we worked. We reviewed the town council, the town manager, the departments, department administrators, school committees, and superintendents. That's something you can't do as a council. You go through the town manager. We had the flexibility to bring everybody in, ask them questions, they tell us answers, they tell us what they're doing and so forth. So we had a toolkit that's advantageous to the council at any rate today. And sometimes some of the answers we received were responses. We'd say, you know what? Let's bring them back because we have something here, something there, and we sorted things out. I'm going to get to Paul and Michael. For years and years, you'd go to the annual financial town meeting, and everyone would say, when's this going to end? It's stupid. What's happening here? What was done in this last charge and the difficulty, it wasn't eliminating the annual town meeting that was difficult, it was replacing it. And Michael and Paul were instrumental in putting together the section of the charter, it's five, you remember it. And there was a lot to it, and it's working because I get feedback from people that are on the finance committee, and that's what's making it work, you know? And that was over my head. Just turn to B quickly. Wait a minute, before B, I'm still on A. At the last page, you're going to see recommendations. The first recommendation, and this is why this is important tonight because these recommendations really haven't been followed out. And it's something that every council or new council should go back to the charter, see the charters that had recommendations because they didn't get out in a ballot and they weren't voted on, they get lost. But these recommendations I'm going to read to you is something that I think that this existing council should implement. And that was back in two thousand eight. So the town council created an ad hoc committee for the sole purpose of the transmission of non-educational purchases from the school department to the town central purchasing. And I believe they've been doing that, as it says in five point one eight. But back in two thousand eight, I use it, I've used it for years. School departments across the street, sometimes it's tough to walk across here because there's a twenty-foot wall in the center of the street. You've got to get the wall down. So our recommendation was the town council school committee should meet quarterly. I recall they had one meeting after we put this in. But this is going back in two thousand eight, that four times a year, the council and school committee get together for a meeting. The other recommendation was that the town manager and school superintendent should meet monthly. They can take turns walking across the street. But whatever they talk about, you would just, they would just give a report back to the council, a report back to the school committee. Maybe there was nothing to say that month, but you would get something to see what's going on by each side. And I want to, I always use this analogy. Years ago, the roof collapsed in Pleasant View School. It used to be called Pleasant View, then it was Anna McCabre, and I guess now it's back to Pleasant View. But the roof collapsed because the wood structure, the arch wood in the cafeteria, it split, and they had to shut down the cafeteria, and the roof collapsed. The school didn't have the money for it. But the town came to the plate, set the money, gave the money to the school department to repair that roof. So the town's never going to let things fall apart there. You'll always be behind the back. But I remember that roof that fell apart. so it says here in the recommendation that the school committee and town council should make every effort to consolidate non-educational services. And then in the last charter in two thousand twenty, and I've been saying this for fifteen years, we had a recommendation to consolidate the Sew and Water Board because the council, I don't have to get upset at so many times, the council comes and goes. The water issues don't come and go. And then I said it a few years ago. You're fortunate you have a public works director that knows water inside and out. But the sewer authority got real good at what they did because there are people around it, they're on it for years. And I even talked to them at the time. They'd be willing if they merged. And it would be easier for everyone, less taxing on the council, less taxing on the advocate and so forth. So a quick explanation of the recommendations. And this was in two thousand eight. And the words that run the money today. The confluence of state and local tax caps, level funding of state aid to education, the state's current projected budget deficits, potential tax collection fall-offs related to difficulties in the mortgage and lending markets have made imperative that municipalities and the school departments work together to find ways to create efficiencies and reduce costs. This can only be accomplished by effective communication, period. Municipal school counterparts should convene and schedule meetings to understand the range of functions and activities performed by each side in spirit of cooperation to ensure that most effective use of the fiscal resources provided by the taxpayers of the town of Smithfield. And why I'm here tonight, these recommendations should not be taken lightly. More time is being spent on the content of the recommendations than on proposed charter changes. Is the consensus of the Charter Review Commission that the recommendations are an administrative function versus a charter issue? And as your solicitor pointed out too, is about when we wanted to change the water board. It just can't happen. Well, it could, but to the day. So it's a consensus of the Charter Review Commission that the recommendations are an administrative function versus a charter issue. The Charter Review Commission interview has clearly demonstrated the requirement for better communications or to promote greater fiscal responsibility In two thousand eight, we saw a gap in purchasing because we looked at everything. And we looked at that more than once. And then subsequent after that, there was a separate full-time purchaser that the town employed. So if you look at B, during the course of the charter review in two thousand eight, we promoted it. The Observer did an article on it. We went to them. They did an article on it. And we set aside a separate meeting just for residents, no one else. And they came to the meeting. And you flip the page. And unfortunately, at that, if you read this whole, if you read this whole the reporter, he went off on a side issue that the town is behind us right now. if you look at the, if you look at the public comments on the second page, what's by Michael Tataglia? That was in two thousand eight. And I believe now he's on the finance, the finance committee. So we had the passion then to come to the meeting. And he's on the finance committee. Gary DeGoyan was concerned about removing a town manager without cause. I'm going to tell you how concerned he was. When I was looking through the files, he was on the very first, he was on the very first charter review before we even had a charter. It wasn't a review, he was on the first charter commission. And he and another person on it, I think it was John Sarah Pigouya. They just felt it wasn't unfair that someone would come to be a town manager and could be removed without cause. Getting back to Article Five, Financial Procedures, it was very, very difficult to get rid of that financial town meeting that was archaic without having something that was going to work. And I'd wake you on your own time to review Article Five of Financial Procedures and see just what was put in place and how it's working very well today. Because everyone talked about it for years that we did something about it. Look at C. In C, you're going to see three charts. There's a chart of the organizational chart of the town of Smithfield. Now, we asked for that chart in two thousand eight, before we started even interviewing town administrators, town manager, town council, school department, because we wanted to see what was in place then. And then you could see if there was a gap. And then we further went and asked every town administrator on this side of the street, we wanted a chart of their department. And you're going to see them, the second part, see them? So we were able to see how every department had an organizational chart within their department of the employees just in that department. It was very educational. we got one from the school side. You can see it there. So I believe that's a toolkit that you should use at all times. It's good to have, except this was in two thousand eight. So you could easily now say, let's get a chart to see how things change and use it as a toolkit to see who's on first base, you know? So I would recommend that you get up-to-date charts that this current Charter Review Commission will want to use. But the council should use it and everyone else. And that's where we saw a gap in purchasing. If you look at D, I'm just telling you, it worked for two Charter Review Commissions. And we didn't get any complaints from the councils. And what you see there, when we came up with what was approved by the Charter Review Commission, you've got the change on the left side, you've got the explanation in the center, you've got the voting. And that's what we handed in. I'm going to use an analogy here of what hopefully will change. You see C two point oh two staggered terms with four-year staggered terms. And you stack that up by the two highest forecasters because I've done it before in another part of government to get it started for staggered terms. And then you look at the explanation. The model charter, which all charters Rhode Island, the charter addition eight recommends four-year staggered terms. This was in two thousand eight. Eighty-two percent of municipalities surveyed have chosen staggered terms over current terms to avoid dramatic changes in council composition at each election. There's a reason why it's mandated by law for school committees in the state of Rhode Island. There's a reason for it. Because they need continuity to run the educational system. It's difficult being in a school committee. And eighty-two percent of the country has it. My analogy is if you could hire to be a CEO of St. Smithfield, Rhode Island, you move to to Smithfield, you go to get a pulse on the company that's in the town and everything about it. And then two years later, the board directors decide you are no longer needed. Well, the CEO is you, council members. The board of directors is the voters. So after two years, they can be gone. And I've been coming to council meetings for a long time, and I haven't in the last few years. But you see that, I see that someone gets on the council, it takes them a while to figure it out, because that's not easy either. You're not just figuring out, being on the council, you're figuring out the town, you're figuring out everything else, the departments, the town manager, whatever. And it takes a while. And then, next thing you know, it's time to get on the street and run for reelection. All into 24-month period. And if you did your due diligence, did the best you could to be a good council person, and it takes, trust me, it takes a long time whether you want to admit it or not, because I've seen it. And then the next thing you know, you spend your time running for office again, and the next thing you know, you're no longer on the council. To me personally, the town's getting sort of changed. Because if you did the right thing to be on the council, you did your homework to be the best council person you could be, then 24 minutes, 24 months later, it's all done. Where's the passion to want to do it again? So if we had staggered terms and you were on for four years, you've got a plan, you can work hard to become a great council person, and you know you're going to be there to do your job and not have to get out and campaign every 24 months. So again, there's a reason why the school department, the school, I'm sorry, the state mandates that school committees have staggered terms, and eighty-two percent of the, eighty-two percent of the towns and communities in the country have them. So, and it takes a lot of energy to be a good council person. And that's why if you knew you had four years, it's just a good plan. In closing, I'm going to sit down with the new 2025 Charter Review Commission, because there's stuff, there's items in some paperwork, I didn't want to, you know, extend your time to do, you've got a long agenda. So I would be willing to sit down with them and show what we did. I recommend that they get two interns who would help them from Bryant. And that's about it. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Constantino. Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
And I would recommend also that you do sit down with the new Charter Commission and give them what you gave us, and give them a head start.
Yeah, I want to give them a little more too, and they can figure out whether they want to use it or not, you know?
Right. And I just asked the chief to call Bryant tomorrow to get two votes.
I forget what department I went to so long ago, because I'm old now, I don't remember everything, you know?
We have a new.
They have a department up there that the students are involved in, whatever, you know? But these two were excellent, and they got an education, you know?
We have a contact in the president's office now, so I'll reach out to her tomorrow.
Yeah. If I can remember, I don't even know if they got the same cell phones, but these two guys, and this made it a lot easier for the Charter Review Commission.
Thank you very much, Mr. Constantino. It's always a pleasure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Number six on the agenda, move the minutes of the February 20 to 25 executive session meeting held pursuant to the Maryland General Law Section 42465A1 personnel interview, Adam LaGreca, Dennis Akosha, Emily Coswell, Ernie Almonte, Jamie Cothers, Cameron Catlow, Kerry Lordman, Richard Dugay, Robert Randolph, and Thomas Oskens, for possible appointment to the Town Board of Commission to be approved as recorded and sealed. I'll entertain a motion. Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, ayes, ayes. Have it. Number B, move the minutes of the February 20 to 25, 2025 open session meeting approved as recorded. Entertain a motion. Have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, ayes, ayes. Have it. Item C, move the minutes of the March 4, 2025 executive session meeting held pursuant to the Maryland General Law Section 42465A1 personnel interview with Russell Marcela, Richard Saintsivier, Chris Boyle, Barbara Rich, Barbara Bowery, Peter Pear for possible appointments, and reappointment to the Town Board of Commission by approved as recorded and sealed. I'll entertain a motion. So moved. Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, ayes, ayes. Have it. Item D, move the minutes of the March 4, 2025 open session meeting to be approved as recorded. I'll entertain a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, ayes, ayes. Have it. Item seven, consider discussion act upon the following possible appointments and reappointments. Show authority appointment with the term expiring January 2030.
Motion to appoint Christopher Boyle.
Now, a motion, have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, ayes, ayes. Land trust reappointment with the term expiring September 2029.
Move to reappoint Barbara Rich.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, ayes, ayes. Housing authority reappointment with term expiring January 2030.
Motion to reappoint Barbara Bowery.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, ayes, ayes. Conservation Commission reappointment with the term expiring July of 2027.
Move to reappoint Peter Pear.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, ayes, ayes.
Mr. President, if I may make a motion to take some items out of order according to Rule Seven of our Town Council rules in section, it's going to be 11, item N and item O, please.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, ayes, ayes. Item N, communicate with the Town Council for the town solicitor and Leo Council for Organogenesis Holdings, Inc. and Organogenesis, Inc., the tax stabilization agreement ordinance adopted on March 6, 2025. Mr. Solicitor.
Mr. President, last week, as a result of the March 6 meeting that addressed, had several items on it relative to the Organogenesis tax stabilization agreement, as well as a subsequent ordinance that was adopted, there was a lot of confusion that resulted out of that meeting. And last week, we spent many hours trying to address a lot of the issues that were raised that night, and the communication that you have in your packet reflects what occurred. So there was a lot of debate as to a tax stabilization agreement, well, the first order of business would have been the tax stabilization agreement that was adopted. What form it was? Was it the tax stabilization agreement that was presented by Organogenesis as part of its packet? Or was it the ordinance that was adopted as amended with respect to proposed amendments from the tax assessor myself, as well as the town manager? So as a result of the votes, the vote that was taken, the issue that was the tax stabilization agreement that was adopted was the one that was, the one with my amendments, my proposed amendments. It was a subsequent motion to reconsider at that meeting, which, from a legal standpoint, was improper because it violated our council rules. But subsequent to that agenda item, there was an ordinance that incorporated basically, almost word for word, the tax stabilization proposed agreement that was part of Organogenesis' initial application that was vetted by the Financial Budget Board of Review. So the question is, well, the question that resulted was, the ordinance that was adopted, in essence, incorporated the tax stabilization agreement as it was part of Organogenesis' initial application, and was the application that was presented to the Financial and Budget Board of Review, which obviously came before this council. That was, was a public hearing on that ordinance. It was adopted, the application, the agreement that was in that application was incorporated by the vote of the council that night. So with respect to what's out there, you have two different versions of two different tax stabilization agreements, but you have an ordinance that incorporated what was, in essence, the agreement that was voted on by the council that night. There were several steps that need to be taken here to address this issue. We have several items on tonight for public hearings. One is to amend the tax stabilization agreement that was voted on by the council at the last meeting to incorporate the changes that were voted on as part of the initial ordinance. Tonight, we forwarded your communication, trying to explain exactly what happened and clear up as to what needs to be done moving forward over here. And that's the basis of the communication. The next item basically is a resolution that's on the agenda to try and effectuate the intent of the council with respect to the ordinance that was adopted. And then we will notice two hearings tonight, two public hearings tonight, one for amending the ordinance to basically comply with, or basically to conform to the ordinance that was the tax stabilization agreement that was incorporated as part of the ordinance that was adopted at the council at the last meeting. And the other one is to, the other one is to amend our tax, our existing tax stabilization ordinance to address a lot of the changes, whether we're, to address a lot of the inconsistencies that existed, or that still exist within our ordinance right now that are inconsistent with some of the proposed language in Organogenesis's, Organogenesis's initial tax stabilization application.
So what do we need to do on N?
You're just accepting the communication. I wanted everybody to understand what happened and how we're going to clean it up.
Okay. So there's no vote to be taken?
No.
We have a motion to accept as presented. We have a second motion to accept.
Some moved second, yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye, ayes, ayes. O, consider discussion act upon adopting a resolution conforming the terms and the legislative intent of the tax stabilization ordinance adopted on March 6, 2025.
As I just explained, the ordinance that was adopted by the council, in essence, incorporated the tax stabilization agreement that was voted on by the Financial Budget Review Board. And that agreement was incorporated by reference in the, actually in the ordinance. And as a result of that vote, that ordinance would become effective on April 6. But before that time, we are going to, on April 1st, we're going to address some of the inconsistencies that were in the existing tax stabilization enabling ordinance, as well as inconsistencies with respect to the ordinance, the actual tax stabilization agreement that was adopted by the council on March 6, which was the agreement as with my proposed amendments, the town manager's proposed amendments, and the amendments by Chris Celeste. So in order to make everything consistent, you're going to have two public hearings on April 1st to address these inconsistencies. So by the time the ordinance becomes, by the time the tax stabilization ordinance incorporating the Organogenesis tax stabilization agreement becomes effective on April 6, everything will conform to.
So why do we need this? If we're going to, we're going to amend our ordinance, we're going to amend the agreement with Organogenesis based on our amendment to our ordinance, and then presumably a new ordinance is going to pass that incorporates the agreement on our April 6 meeting?
April 1st meeting.
On our April 1st. So why do we need this?
Well, in further, it says, this resolution says, this ordinance was properly adopted on March 6, when, didn't you just, Solicitor, you just say that it?
No, the ordinance, so the ordinance, the ordinance was adopted properly?
It's the agreement that wasn't.
It's the agreement that wasn't adopted properly.
Gotcha.
So why do we, why do we need to indicate that we properly adopted the ordinance? I don't understand the reason for any of this, really. This is just, looks like a. Mr. Savage?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm happy to try to answer that question. So as Solicitor Goulon indicated, there were two agreements that the council approved on March 6. There was the agreement that was approved on the motion brought by council member Ionati, which was in connection with Agenda Item A, which was the application. And then subsequent to that, long subsequent to that, there was a second vote to approve the ordinance that was submitted that was incorporating the changes that were read into the record that night. That was the form of the agreement that had been subject to the faulty vote to reconsider. So the reason we need the resolution respectfully is, I think there was, I know, there was quite a bit of confusion about exactly what ordinance was passed, and we need clarity. So we have an effective date of April 6 of that ordinance so we can sign this agreement. We need clarity as to which agreement was authorized by the ordinance confirming essentially what Solicitor Goulon and I agreed, you know, happened and set forth in our communication with the council that the council just voted to accept, and critically, so there's 100% clarity that there's a meeting in the minds as to what that, the terms of that ordinance are.
Any other questions?
I don't think there'll be 100% clarity until it's fixed. So I don't really think this does anything. I think it's just, you know, maybe it makes you feel better, I don't know. It just, to me, this is just.
Well, he's got a bad leg.
Oh, well, you know.
Mr. President, this time I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution confirming the legislative intent.
Second. Any more discussion? Hearing dictators in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Ayes.
Ayes.
Ayes, have it. Item number eight, continue the public hearing, consider discussion act upon the amendment of Code of Ordinance in Chapter 283 entitled Seal, and the town sponsored by members Ionati and Tapi. Mr. Ionati.
Yes, Mr. President, the, we have asked for some amendments to the ordinance, which would make the purpose of the ordinance specifically to prevent individuals or organizations from falsely indicating by using the seal that there is town approval for the particular thing that they are trying to get residents to do. I think Solicitor Goulon had a good example of some frauds that had been perpetrated on people in the past.
Somebody basically could use that town seal to send out a fake tax bill to unsuspecting individuals, and those individuals could potentially remit payment somewhere that they're not supposed to be remitting payment. So obviously, the instances, I believe that you're talking about are instances related to fraud that have some, some element of criminality to them.
So in the interim, I believe President DeSantis sent a letter to the ACLU on this, and.
I just sent them a copy of the ordinance.
They sent a copy of the ordinance. And they, I think, had some problems with the language in it. So we'd like to take the time to take another. So, we'd like to take an, the time to take another look at it, to make sure that there are no, there would be no First Amendment violations with this ordinance. But I want to reiterate, the intent of this ordinance is to prevent fraud by, fraud upon our residents, by individuals purporting to be acting with the approval of the town government. I've also, we've also want to add a section that nothing here shall constitute a restriction on the use of the town's code of arms, which is a totally separate thing from the seal. The seal actually is a very nice seal that we have, but we never officially adopted it. And so, this ordinance would also do that. So, I would move, Mr. President, that we continue the public hearing on this ordinance to our next meeting on April 1st, to give us an opportunity to clarify the language in our ordinance and make sure that there are no First Amendment concerns.
I'd just like to open it up for public hearing, in case someone came in, just for that. If not, I'll continue the public hearing until April 1st. Anyone like to speak on it? Hearing nine would like to take a motion to continue it to April 1st.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Ayes, ahs, ahs. Item B, schedule a public hearing on April 15th to consider discussion act upon an amendment to Chapter 312 of the Code of Ordinance and Act, Section 312 and 29 entitled Sidewalks, Snow Removal, sponsored by myself. This is just to schedule a public hearing on April 15th.
So moved.
Any motion? I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Ayes.
I just wanted to make a, a comment on this. I will be voting for scheduling this for a public hearing because I think we need to hear from the public. But I, I'd like to, uh, that we, I'd like that we take into account, maybe, some individuals may not be able to remove the snow. We have a lot of elderly people in the town of Smithfield. We have, we have disabled people. So, you know, we'll, we'll see what, you know, what the public response is at the public.
Well, this was, this was brought to my attention because of the issue that happened in Wausaka, that young little girl got killed, and the mother got hit by the car because they had to walk, and the sidewalks went plowed. So, we'll wait to see what the public has to say about it. I'm okay with that. Item number C. Do we vote on it?
Let's, let's revote it.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor? Aye. Ayes. Ayes, ahs, ahs. Schedule a public hearing on April 15th to discuss and act upon an amendment of Chapter 257 of the Code of Ordinance's Edition, Section 257, Number 10, entitled Tree and Shrug Shrimming, sponsored by myself. And this also came from a bunch of folks, especially where that girl got killed on Route 116, the branches were hanging over, and they weren't trimmed properly, and people have asked me to put that in. So, entertain a motion to put it on the agenda for April 15th for public hearing.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Ayes. Ayes, ahs, ahs. Schedule a public hearing on April 1st to consider discussion act upon amendment, Chapter 321, titled Taxation, Article 6, exempting stabilization of taxes to qualified commercial and manufacturing property.
So moved.
I have a second. Second. Any discussion?
I have a question about it. At the end is my, is a memo from the town manager regarding proposed amendments to establish tiers for tax stabilization ordinances. Would that be part of the whole package here that gets advertised, et cetera? Because we want to give the council an opportunity to discuss and vote on that part of it as well. We had an order, you know, we had a sample ordinance with that already included. I guess, you know, it was taken out. I don't, I, I guess the, the tax assessor had an objection to it. But I came up with these because council people at council had approached me and said they thought it was a good idea, so. That's my question.
I mean, it can be published as is because that is a proposed amendment to it.
So, it's, it's, it's a matter of, what does this council want to advertise? They want to advertise the existing ordinance that's in the packet right now with Mr. Ionati's amendments? Or do they basically want to leave it as is? That's, but you, you need to decide what you're going to advertise.
Oh, I think we, we should.
I think it should be all for inclusive because if you leave it out, if you leave it out, you can't put it in, but you can always take it out.
So, we'll do that.
So, I'll just clarify my motion to schedule the public hearing inclusive of all the amendments in Article 6, as well as the, the corresponding memo.
I have a second.
To advertise all those.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. Ayes. Ayes, ahs, ahs. Item E, schedule a public hearing April 1st, 2025, to consider and discuss the act upon an amendment of tax stabilization agreement between Organogenesis Holdings, Inc. and Organogenesis, Inc. and DVI Technology Way, LLC, authorized by the town council on March 6, 2025, making said agreement consistent with the terms of the ordinance and tax stabilization adopted on March 6th. Entertain a motion.
Uh, Mr. President, I just, I just want to confirm that this is, this advertised version is acceptable to the parties from what you understand?
It's on the, it's on the ordinance that was adopted.
That's the same, it's the same version, right? Okay. So moved.
Any discussion?
Which, which agreement is it that we're amending?
Public hearing.
So, at the public hearing, the agreement that got amended was the tax stabilization agreement that was amended were with the amendments of myself, the tax assessor, as well as the interim town manager.
So, we're, um, this motion is to amend the original agreement that passed?
Correct, correct.
Five, the one that passed five to none?
Correct.
And that, that's just, is just scheduling it for a public hearing?
Correct.
All in favor? Aye. Ayes. Ayes, ahs, ahs. Item 9, licenses, consider discussion act upon approving new particular only licenses for Star Night Cafe.
Move that the town council approve a new Victor Ling only license for Starry Night Cafe. Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Ayes. Ayes, ahs, ahs. Item B, consider discussion act upon approving the annual renewal of 30 holiday licenses as listed below. Do I have to read them, Anthony?
As listed, as applied.
As listed, as applied.
So moved.
Next. I have a second. Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Ayes. Ayes, ahs, ahs. Item C, consider discussion act upon approving a annual renewal of one weapons license as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations, High Table Outfitters, LLC. Everything in order then?
Yes.
Entertain a motion.
Move to approve the renewal of one weapons license to High Table Outfitters.
Second. Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Ayes. Ayes, ahs, ahs. Item D, consider discussion act upon approving and renewal of one mobile food truck license as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances, Little Bee's Barbecue LLC.
Move that the town council approve the renewal of one mobile food truck license for Little Bee's Barbecue.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Ayes. Ayes, ahs, ahs. Item E, consider discussion act upon approving the annual renewal of one bingo license as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances, Georgetown Tennis Association.
Move that to town council, approve the annual renewal of one bingo license for Georgetown Tennis Tenants Association.
Second. Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Ayes. Ayes, ahs, ahs. Number 10, old business, there is none, new business. Consider discussion act upon authorization of disability for fire department employee.
Move that to town council hereby authorize a fire disability retirement for Captain Christopher Keane, effective Wednesday, March 19th, 2025. Second.
Any discussion? Hearing dictators in favor? Aye. Ayes. Ayes, ahs, ahs. Mr. Keane, will you step forward, please?
Mr. President. On behalf of the town council, I want to wish you all the best in your 20 years of service for the town of Smithfield. You deserve everything you get. So, thank you. I know the chief wants to say a few words.
So, I've been chief of the department for almost 13 years now, which means the majority of your career was under my, under my command. Very proud to have you in that position, proud to be your chief. And what Smithfield is losing today, somebody's going to gain in the future because you're going to be an asset to somebody else. So, congratulations, and you've done, you've done a lot for the department, and we all appreciate it. So, thank you very much, Mr. Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item B, consider discussion act upon authorizing the police department to purchase through the master price agreement, 61429 Body One Cameras, four administrative managers' license, and Axon Enterprises Scottdale, Arizona, in the amount of $50,000 to be funded through the Rhode Island State Subgrant Award, 2021 BWC 212F. Chief.
Good afternoon, sir. Good evening, sir, and members of the council. Eric Dolan, chief of police. As council president stated, that's what we're looking for. Detective Lieutenant Dennis Cuadamacho, the last seven months, has been doing extensive research on the Body One Camera program. In Axon, not only is it on the master bid list, it also is the best system that integrates with our current tasers and also the attorney general's portal for evidence security. So, it would be the best, not only quality product, it'd also be the best to integrate into the systems. And as the council president said, $50,000 initially, which will be reimbursed by the initial Body One Camera grant.
Thank you.
That's for six years.
Five years.
Oh, five years.
So, it would be five year, it would be $50,000 a year over five years. We were told by Mike Kogan that we were receiving $253,000 over the course of the program. The extra $3,000 would be used for the training of the initial part of the program.
Great, thank you.
Chief, I, I just wanted to say thank you for bringing the ball across the finish line here. It's a long time coming for the town of Smithfield.
Well, I appreciate it. I got to say, Executive Lieutenant Dennis Cuadamacho did a lot of work over the last seven months, once we got into office and we're there.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I would just like to echo, echo what you're saying. I know the Body One Camera has been, it's, it's a long process, there's a lot of research involved. I think this is great for transparency on, both for criminal defendants in traffic stops as well as for the police department. I know we're one of the few departments that did not have one over the last few years, so I think this is an excellent step in the right direction, and I'd just like to thank you and Detective Lieutenant for your, your efforts in this.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
I have a second. Any discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Ayes. Ayes, ahs, ahs. Item C, discuss and, consider and discuss the act upon authorizing the town manager to enter into a contract with Seawell Contract, Number 011723-JDC, with United Construction and Forestry Company of Westbrook, Maine, for the purchase of one new ME 36 mulching head for the Public Works Department, in the amount of $21,243.72 to be paid out of the capital reserve account.
Good evening. Gene Allen, Director of Public Works. This is an attachment that's going to go on the mini excavator. As you know, we have about 80 detention ponds in town that we must maintain. Some of the slopes and some of the areas we have to get into, it's much easier to do with the, the mini excavator, which is on tracks, and it's much more efficient than going in there and cutting it by hand.
Any questions of Mr. Allen?
This is coming from, this isn't coming from your budget, though, is it?
It's coming from.
It wasn't from your capital budget, it's coming from the.
Capital reserve money.
The town's capital reserve money.
Yes, correct.
And that budgeted as a lump sum of, I think it was, three or 400,000 dollars.
So, we have some money left over in capital that, these are things that we may have had it done, do in the future, now that we had it now, we want to get it out of the way.
So, there's a fund for that money left over?
Yes. The capital reserve, like, if he doesn't use all of the capital this year, we're, we're assigning it, and he's got some left over that we can utilize, so.
Any other questions?
I just have a question, kind of in the broader sense, and this was, this was brought to my attention by one of the members of the budget board who, and I had never thought about this before, but I know we purchase police vehicles through capital, and then this looks like it's an attachment to a vehicle, is that accurate, or attachment to a machine?
To a machine, yes.
To a machine. I'm just wondering why this falls under capital? Because in my mind, when I hear capital, I think permanent building renovation.
So, anything over $10,000 single purchase is considered a capital item? If it has to do with buildings, vehicles, equipment, anything over $10,000 is supposed to be on a considered capital?
Okay, so it's, it's because of the dollar value?
Yes. I believe there's also a life expectancy in there.
Yeah, there's this depreciation element to it as well.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Entertain a motion.
Move that the town council authorize the interim town manager to enter into contract with United Construction and Forestry Company for the purchase of one new ME 36 mulching head with mounting kit and hydraulic quick disconnect kit through Soswell contract as listed here.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Ayes. Ayes, ahs, ahs. Item D, consider discussion act upon authorizing the town manager enter into a contract through Seawell Contract in 062222-VCM with Civics Corporation, DBA Viking Civics of Harrisville, New York, and the purchase of two snowplows for the Public Works Department in the amount of $19,622 to be paid out from the capital reserve account.
Again, these are two Eleven for snowplows that go on the, the larger trucks. I think a couple of years ago, we, we started to replace some of the plows. These plows are well over 30 years old. They've, they've taken quite a beating over the years, and over, over time, we can do some repairs to them, but then they all of a sudden don't start to clear the road as well because of the bends and nicks and stuff like that. So, we're just starting to replace a couple of them at a time, just to keep.
Entertain a motion.
Are these, are these new plows, or is this year? It says Viking 11, is that the year? Because I know you said they're 30 year, the ones we have are currently 30 years old.
The ones that we're replacing are over 30, over 30 years.
Are these ones that we're purchasing?
Brand new.
Brand new, okay, thank you. I wasn't sure if 11 meant year or.
Entertain a motion.
I'll do that one. The Smithfield Town Council authorizes the interim town manager to enter into contract with Soswell, sees corporation doing business as Viking Mill Street, Harrisville, New York, for purchase of two Viking 11 power snowplows.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Ayes. Ayes, ahs, ahs. Item E, consider discussion act upon authorizing the town manager enter to a contract through around a master price agreement, 584, with Stavro Khan of Stevensville, Maryland, for the purchase of four new cable mobile column lifts for the Department of Public Works in the amount of $47,584.91 to be paid out of the capital reserve fund.
So, as you know, we pretty much occupy a 1950's building, which has a very low ceiling. We have one bay that is, is higher than the rest of the garage. We currently do not have any lifts to lift any of the vehicles up, to do any work underneath. A lot of times, we have to send that work out to, to somewhere else. So, these lifts are, each one of them has a lifted capacity of 18,000 and change, so it's 74,000 pounds that we can lift up, so we can lift larger vehicles. If it ever wanted to get into doing maintenance on, like, fire department trucks that has a third axle, or if we got a 10-wheeler, at some point, you just buy two more of these and bring, so you can lift them up and you can do some work. Again, it's, the, the garage that we're in, this, we're just trying to make the best use of it and do as much work in-house as we can as opposed to send it out to, to be, to work on somewhere else.
Director Allen, so how much is spent annually on outsourcing maintenance for those instances?
It's hard to say. It depends on the equipment that's going out. It's hard to say, it depends on the equipment that's going out. If you have to do an in-chassis overhaul, I would say we're probably spending 30, 35,000 a year.
Okay, thank you.
So, this will save money in the long run?
In the long run, this is, the whole idea is to save some money and actually make it safer to work under the vehicles.
Entertain a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Nays? Ayes have it. Item M. Consider discuss act upon authorizing the town manager enter into a contract through the Master Price Agreement 506 with Ed and Matt Equipment Company of Greenville, Rhode Island, for the purchase of two mowers, the Parks Department, in the amount of $29,796.80 to be paid out of the capital reserve account.
This represents replacing two of the last old mowers that we have in the department. One's a 2012, the other one's a 2014. These mowers are used every day during the summer and they're beyond their life expectancy. So, this would just replace those two mowers pretty much in time.
I know that they were working on, or your department was working on the mowing schedule, has that been straightened out?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Any discussion? Entertain a motion. Yes.
I just have a quick question.
No, they are not cutting your grass.
There's leaves on top, Mr. President. So, you're replacing them. We, you know from the performance audit, we agreed to merge the two. So, Gene, is it still the Parks Department? You've taken over this, so, okay, so it says Parks Department in here.
I would consider it a division within the public.
Okay, all right.
It's, I think it says Parks Division. Right, right.
Right, because the, the manager or the Parks Department Director still reports to the manager, so that's, I'm trying to figure, do you understand what I'm trying to say?
He's got everything.
He's got it, okay.
He's got everything. Everything under one roof.
And as a follow-up to my question, is, is Deerfield Park and the Parks, are they mowed every day during the week?
No.
Okay.
It depends on the season. You know, you have a higher growing season than others, so we'll probably hit them maybe three times a week during a heavy season.
Okay, thank you.
Entertain a motion. Have a second. All's in favor? Aye. Nays? Ayes have it. Item G. Sitting as a Smithfield water supply boy, consider discuss act upon authorizing the town manager enter into a contract with Beta Group of Lincoln, Rhode Island, for the engineering and design of log road water main extension in the amount of $143,400 to be funded through the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank and U.S. EPA's emerging contaminants in small and disadvantaged communities grant.
So, a couple of months ago, I was approached by the Rhode Island Department of Health regarding the Hever Health Center. They have onsite wells that they're having some problems with, which is where the emerging contaminants portion of this grant makes us eligible. They have an extremely complicated treatment system within their facility that they're challenged to keep it going because of costs and things like that. But one of the, most likely, there's a consent order being drafted to them. One of the things that the Department of Health looks at when they look at consent orders is, is there an alternative way to supply water? The Department of Health reached out to me and asked if we had the ability to service this facility. As far as capacity-wise, we don't have a problem servicing them. The problem is that our water main is about 2,500 feet away. So, through this emerging contaminants grant, they're recommending to the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank that we receive a $1 million grant, not a payment, so a full 100% grant to extend this water main down to service the property. As we go down, we would also obviously provide a service to the property line of every property that we went by, so for future, we're not digging up the road to go back in. The interesting thing about this project is, if you remember, um, a year or so ago, I had to put a couple of steel plates on top of the culvert, um, log road, because we had, we have some problems with the 48-inch culvert underneath. It's a corrugated metal pipe and it's had some repairs done to it in the past. This will also include replacing that as part of the grant. So, what we did is we reached out to our engineer of record, it's Beta Group, and I, you know, worked through a scope of work with them and they gave me the proposal. I reviewed this proposal with the Department of Health and Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank. Your vote tonight, if you choose to approve this, would be contingent upon the grant being awarded by the Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank, which I have a placeholder on their meeting on the 20th, a couple of days for this. So, if you approve, I'll be talking to the town, interim town manager tomorrow with the application and supporting information, we'll get that down to them. If they vote on it, then we'll sign the contract with Beta. This is just for the design. We're estimating, it might be a million, might be a little bit more than a million, we don't know until we go through the permitting and, and the design phase. When we go out to bid and we receive the bids in, we will then have an idea of what, a very good idea of what the, the price will be. Then we'll submit a second phase for the grant, up to the million or potentially more if there's more funding available.
So, there'll be no money from the town of Smithfield into that project?
As of right now, no. I say that in that there's a million dollars available right now. If this project comes in at, let's say, $1,200,000, I'd be back in front of you and we would either adjust the design to stay underneath the million if we could, or we would look at additional funding that may be available from Rhode Island Infrastructure Bank as a grant, or we could always go out and if we thought the project merited it, we could always go out and do some other funding if necessary, but that's a future discussion.
The reason why I'm saying this is because I, I understand their little lax in paying their tax bill and a little lax paying other funding to the town. And I don't want the taxpayers paying for something that's going to help them out, but they still owe us money.
Understood.
And I know they're under Chapter 11, I believe, at this point, but we need to be very careful.
Non-receivership, yeah.
We need to be very careful, because if, if you come in front of us and asking for more money for that and they haven't paid their taxes, game over.
I'm aware of that. Gene, just another question I had, has, I believe that somebody lined up the purchase, and I think the assessor can answer this question, that somebody lined up the purchase the facility, from what I understand. I don't know, Chris, can you? Right, we believe somebody's going to be purchasing and paying the real estate taxes?
Sure, so, Chris Celeste, town assessor, it's my understanding that, well, I know it's a receivership and there is a company working to purchase not only the business, but the real property as well.
So, they, will they have to pay us the tangibles?
The tangibles are in the receivership and they could get discharged. We don't know what we're going to get out of the tangibles. The real estate we'll get because it's a lien on the property, but the tangibles is about 130,000 or so outstanding, not counting the bill that I have to send this year as well, which I, I don't know.
Real estate outstanding?
Real estate outstanding is about 100 and something thousand.
Okay, so I, so my, they owe us money, but my question, did, did, has this new company offered any skin in the game to help us pay for this project? Does any, has that been broached by anybody?
Not at this point. This is just a request from the Department of Health to ask if we would be willing to offer this as a solution if they were providing grants through the Rhode Island.
They, they probably don't know that they owe us money.
They will as we move forward.
Yeah.
So, have we given, so we've notified the receiver that we're owed money, correct?
You have a notice of claimant on the tangibles and obviously they have their real, they have their real estate tax bill.
Just so you're aware, that it's, oh, it's almost $300,000, so.
Entertain a motion.
Second.
Any more discussion? Any dinning? All's in favor? Aye. Nays? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Item H. Consider discuss act upon authorizing a request for proposals for the purchase and delivery and installation of two KILNS at the high school to be paid for by grant funds on behalf of the school department.
Good evening.
Hi, Angelo.
How are you? Good evening, Angelo McHoochie, Smithfield Public Schools. Coming for the council tonight to request the ability to advertise the purchase and installation of two kilns for Smithfield High School. This is a grant-funded item and seek your approval to advertise.
Just to confirm, is this for potterying?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Two kilns.
Okay.
And the two that we currently have are in excess of 10 years of age. We actually keep an extra kiln on hand to use the parts, so we are well in need of this.
Any, any, entertain a motion.
We have the Smithfield Town Council on behalf of the school committee approve the advertising and the purchase, delivery, and installation of two kilns.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor? Aye. Nays? Ayes have it. Item I. Consider discuss act approving the terms of the contract with SLAM Architectural Services for the architectural design services for the Ride Assessor School Construction Stage Two application on behalf of the school department.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Robler, I'm with Colliers Project Leaders. I am the OPM for the Smithfield Public School Stage Two process. So, I am before you today, as I mentioned last time I was here, to bring forward the SLAM cost proposal. So, this was the architect that was selected during the qualification stage. We have now moved to the cost proposal stage, costs have been negotiated, and the costs are in the packet that you received as part of your packet for today's meeting. So, I want to go over a few things and then we'll open it up for questions, just to kind of make sure that everybody understands all the different parts and pieces. So, to start, we have our two emergency projects. So, these are classified by Ride as a project that the school identifies needs to be done immediately and for one reason or another, and you're allocated, or each town is allocated, each school district is allocated $500,000 per fiscal year that you can utilize, that you will receive Ride reimbursement for. Smithfield's Ride reimbursement rate is 35%, so of that 500,000, 35% of that amount, of any amount spent up to 500,000 would be reimbursed by Ride. That project can be less than that amount, it can also be more than that amount. If it is more than that amount, then any funds in excess of 500,000 would not be reimbursed by Ride at any percentage rate. So, for this, we will be targeting that both projects, one will be completed in the fiscal year of '25, which will end on June 30th of 2025, and then the other would be completed on, in the fiscal year of '26, which basically the project timeline for that would conclude at the latest on 12/31/25, with the target being before school starts in the fall. So, as we talk about the emergency projects, SLAM has proposed a cost of $70,900, which when we look at the total number of, or both projects and the total amount for those of up to $1 million, that equates to 7.09% of the project value, which is about where we expect the architect's fee to fall. For the Stage Two portion of this project, this is the part of the Ride process for the five-year capital improvement plan that can include anything from small miscellaneous projects that need to be completed to entire buildings that need to be built. For Smithfield, we will be targeting a group of projects that was in the RFP that we came before y'all last time to speak about, and this is up to $4.3 million, fourth of estimated worth. Or SLAM will engage in assembling all of the information that is required, which is demographic, educational, planning information, as well as the various projects and the schematic design, conceptual design project plan for those to submit to Ride by September 15th of 2025. After that point, we would then await Ride's decision, and then you would, at that point, move on to Stage Three, and you would elect your, or you would, you would choose your OPM and designer to lead you through that process. So, that fee amount is $123,000 and is essentially 2.84% of the project value, which is $4,338,000. And again, this is in line with what we see in other school districts that we help perform their Stage Two process throughout Rhode Island. Then we have our last item, which is the 10-year facilities cost estimate. As you might have noticed, this terminology has changed. Previously, it was a 10-year master plan, and we wanted to clarify, because during the cost negotiations, SLAM identified that the need that is expressed by Smithfield Public Schools here was to kind of forecast out past years one through five, which is handled by the Stage Two, to years six through 10, so that we can get kind of an idea on what, what's down the road. And so, initially, that was kind of viewed as like a Stage Two light and would come with a robust amount of documentation. That cost came in at like, I think it was like $83,000-ish. Yeah, it was, it was pretty high and it kind of bumped our, our budget up more than it was comfortable. And so, we had some, some conversations about that. And in looking at the various projects that we're looking at and the costs that have been previously assembled over three years ago by Smithfield Public Schools, SLAM suggested that they look at those and help us re-estimate those causes, or those costs based off of today's prices escalated of four years six through 10. And that cost jumped down to $11,500. So, this will give the school district and the town a little bit of a heads up on what the next Stage Two will look like about five years from now, and will help with the planning part of all of this. Of these amounts that I've talked about today, the $11,500 is the only amount that would not be reimbursable through Ride at any percentage rate. Both the $70,900 for the emergency projects and the $123,000 for the Stage Two are submissible to Ride for reimbursement at the rate of 35%. That is true for both the architect's fee and the OPM. So, I'll go ahead and open it up for any questions. Any questions?
Is that, that $70,900 reimbursable because it's under the $500,000 limit?
Correct.
So, you said that the emergency projects could go as high as a million, so, but only 500,000 would be reimbursable?
Let me, let me clarify, so the, the total, because we're kind of doing this in, in a, we are following the rules, but we are collapsing those two on either side of the fiscal year. So, we're doing one at the end of a fiscal year and one right at the beginning of a fiscal year. And so, SLAM is proposing a cost of $70,900 to handle both of those in total. So, not $70,900 per, but $70,900 for the total. And so, when we look at the value of that, we look at the value of the projects up to $500,000 each, a million dollars in total, then that's how we came up with that percentage.
So, because they're in different fiscal years, they're, they're, it's all reimbursable, the whole million dollars?
Correct. Yeah, and so, we would be looking at, as we went through the first emergency project, all of the fees that SLAM billed during that time would be allocated to that project. And then, once we moved into the next fiscal year's project, the fees generated by SLAM at that time, up to not to exceed $70,900, or $70,900, would also be reimbursable and tracked separately.
Would you be able to clarify the CTE culinary space? There's several sections in here that sort of contradict each other, maybe as far as the scope?
Sure. So, for the emergency project, we're, basically with these three items that I discussed, we're looking at CTE in two ways. For the emergency project, this is the, the goal of that project is to meet the minimum standards required by Ride to engage the CTE program for the fall semester, starting in 2025 this year. So, that work would be to abate the floor, it would be to add drains and slope to that floor, and to install a handwashing sink. So, that is the minimum that we need to do with that project in order to meet the last requirement to engage the CTE program. The hard part's already done. Smithfield Public Schools and the high school have been authorized to have a CTE program for the culinary arts. As part of the Stage Two, we will also, we also have a project listed for $650,000 estimated to address both renovation of the high school culinary room and small theater room. So, this would be targeted as a part of the Stage Two, which is a planning stage, this is not actual construction, that would then be, it would be flushed out during that period, and then in your Stage Three would be built according to whatever was decided over the Stage Two project. three would be built according to whatever was decided over the stage two process, which involves the school building committee and feedback and all of those things. This would be the facelift project. This would be the thing to go in and address all of the different items that we might want to address.
Okay. Can I interject? So is this the stage two scope with the new culinary equipment possibly a recommendation? They might not have a recommendation for that, or they?
Entirely.
Entirely?
Yeah, entirely possible.
What they find?
So for a stage two, we go in with a plan of kind of what the school wants to accomplish. And then through that process, the designer and the consultants all kind of gather around, and we funnel all those ideas into some sort of actionable plan that also correlates to all of the various demographics and information about the town of Smithfield and the school district and the surrounding districts. And all of that information is then presented to RIDE. As part of that process, the school building committee has input into how and what might be involved in that project specifically.
Does the school department wish to have new equipment in the culinary room?
Thank you for that question. Absolutely, we'd love to be able to have a plan that we could phase up should there be additional monies in the future. This current plan, though, will allow us to finish off and be authorized as the CTE. We think it's a very aggressive timeline, but we do think if the council does approve this pricing structure, this contract, to move forward with the architect, we are on target to end June with this project being finished.
Thank you.
I shall part. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent, to follow up on that, and maybe, maybe you can speak to this as well. The timeline does seem very aggressive, and there's some language in this memo in a few different places that kind of make it seem like if we, you know, I'm trying to, I'm trying to find the exact language, but it's basically like, if we start right now, maybe we can get it done. So especially with the, with the straddling two fiscal years and the $500,000 reimbursement, I fear that the timeline might not be realistic, and then it would be a $500,000 reimbursement that we wouldn't receive.
Thank you for that question. Not only have we met with the OPM, potential architects, but RIDE several times in terms of do they do this? In fact, this came out of our discussions with RIDE. As recently as Monday, we did another tour with RIDE of the culinary room particularly. Yes, they do believe it can be done, and we would not go forward if we thought that there were, if we were behind on the timeline. But it does allow us to go through December 2025. Our goal is, because I think the construction project, not being a contractor, is minimal for the culinary rooms. So should we close down all or part of the school this summer, we will be able to take up the floor, abate it, slope it, and install a sink. So all involved so far has said, yes, that is very doable during the summer.
So does it have to be, does the first emergency project have to be done at the, my understanding is there's two emergency projects, and each one is going to be done in a different fiscal year. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Okay, so the first project would need to be done before the fiscal year ends?
Substantially completed by June 30th, correct.
Okay, so to say to close down the school and work for the summer, when does school end? Like June 15th, right?
Yes.
So you're saying it'd be a two-week turnaround?
Correct.
That seems realistic to you guys?
I'll let the OPM speak to that.
Okay.
So for this, this first emergency project, the sloping of the floor and handling of the CTE room required upgrades is a small scope for a project overall. Now, we don't have the luxury of time, and so that's kind of what makes this challenging. And so as we are going through this process, this is the one that we've identified that is the fastest to be completed. Abatement can be completed within a week, a week and a half. And in our conversations with RIDE, this last walkthrough, they had mentioned that there's also the possibility that some of the work that we're looking at having to be done because of how that space is being used might not have to be done regarding the slope floors, or how much the floors are sloped, or how much of the floors are sloped, and then how many drains, drains are put in. So we're awaiting information on that. But for all of these, the money that is basically being committed right now is all absorbable in one of these projects. If we started moving forward and we realized, we got bids in and everybody was like, we can't do the schedule, and we tried to figure out how we could, you know, speed things up, and everybody just said, no, there's no way, and we didn't have any bidders. And at that point, that $500,000, it's not money spent, if that makes sense.
It does make sense. So worst-case scenario, you can't, this project can't get done for whatever reason, timeline or whatever. What's the expenditure from the school committee, or from the town, rather?
So the expenditure, I don't know, is really anything that has to be worried about because of how we're combining all of this together, if that makes sense.
So if there's design services being paid for and the project can't get done, those design services are not going to be reimbursed, correct?
Yes. So in that particular case, we would look at the $70,900, and depending on how far we got in that process, if we got to the very, very end of total complete design and we hadn't done construction administration yet, then basically all of the consultants, they would be billed out at about 90%. And then for the architect, they would be billed out probably closer to 80, 85%. So there is an amount there that if we got all the way through the process, we were ready to start construction, and for some reason we could not, then there might be an issue, yes. But the goal is, going into this, that the planning associated with it will get us there, get us across the issue.
Okay. And that associated cost is the $70,900 as well as the other two items, the 21, 23? Okay, just the $70,900?
Yes.
Is there any way to get some, maybe not guarantees, but like some more information from RIDE or from possible people that would accept the RFP? That this is a realistic timeline, just because I don't, I fear contracting for $71,000 and then getting nothing?
I understand. So in this particular case, one of the most effective things that we can do is onboard an architect. The sooner that we can do that, the sooner that we can have these conversations to finalize the planning. But then, also in part, we're an OPM. We handle projects all across the state of Rhode Island. I have had conversations with both contractors and abatement contractors and abatement consultants that all think that this is reasonable. It's accelerated, but it's reasonable. And so that's why we are still pushing forward. My feedback from the industry was, if there's no way that this is possible, then we're going to be making this conversation.
Would you do construction 24/7?
I don't know that we would target 24/7, but if there needed to be a either multi-shift, extended shift, extended week schedule required in order to meet schedule and stay within that $500,000, that would certainly be an approach.
Okay.
Is there a reason that it has to be this fiscal year, or?
Because you're allocated $500,000 per fiscal year. And so what we're trying to do is, we're trying to take full advantage of the, of that total amount. If, for instance, we were to go into this, this project, or even both of these projects, and we were to figure out they're both combined are under $500,000, then hitting before 6:30 doesn't really matter as much.
Do you have any inkling as to how much a project like this could cost, just the, I guess individually and combined?
In both cases, well, we'll say, we'll speak to the CTE program portion of this, provided that we don't, their existing conditions aren't in existing buildings, right? So provided that everything that we're assuming we're going to run into is what we run into, and we don't run into buried Indian artifacts or anything like that, then, you know, things that just nobody could assess are going to be there, then I think we're well within that $500,000 for our first CTE project. For the second project, the relocation project, that is going to be largely dependent on the geopolitical climate, but I think that we're still going to be well under that amount. I just am more hesitant to say, you know, for sure, because of just how things tend to fluctuate day-to-day right now.
Okay. Do you feel like, sorry, guys, do you feel like combined, the projects would exceed the 500, or do you think both projects combined could potentially fall within that?
I don't know. I think, I think that that's right on that line where, where we hope. For instance, I just completed a project where we didn't anticipate, or completed a buyout for a project where we didn't anticipate a lot of buyout savings, and we found over $3 million worth of buyout savings on a $40 million project. So, you know, the percentage that we're seeing is higher, and we're seeing that bid hunger is higher. We're seeing that architectural billings are down, which usually means that bidders in the future are going to want to bid that work more aggressively.
Yeah, so based on what you're saying, it sounds like there isn't really a rush, that both, both projects could potentially fall with, under that $500,000 with no risk instead of rushing?
I don't, I don't know that there's no risk. I think that there is, there is an amount of risk. And so the sure thing is trying to kind of get them into two pots.
Any other questions?
No.
Let me ask you a quick question. To get, Superintendent, and both of you, maybe I'll answer this. To get that CTE program running, just the one you want to get started this fall, all it requires is the improvements in the, I guess you call it a kitchen or whatever you're calling it, right?
Correct.
What's the cost to do that roughly? Just an estimate, just a quick off the top of your head.
I think that total project cost, we're at probably 400 to 450.
To change the, just the kitchen around?
For, for the abatement piece. The abatement piece is concerned, because it's three separate rooms. So it's not just the kitchen, it is the kitchen, it's the adjacent auxiliary room.
But do they both have to be done together? All right. So worst-case scenario, there's enough in the reserve capital set aside for the schools that's $650,000. So worst-case scenario, I'm just throwing this out there as another possibility. You can still get that done to get this program. I know it's not, I know it would have to come out of the capital reserve, but I'm more concerned about holding that program up, especially if the school district's going to bring in students. And as we know, the more we bring in, the more money, the money follows the students. So I'm just throwing that out there, just, you know, make sure we don't forget about that if this is that critical. And if it, if it's not, then by all means, we should try to get the RIDE money. But I don't, I think the education piece would have, we have another shot at the education piece because we happen to have some funds put aside. And I know the superintendent, so where do we have the money?
And I appreciate that, Town Manager, because as we've talked about this, this is the last, and it's, I'm not going to call it a hurdle, it is something that we're working through. In fact, we feel very confident, and RIDE feels very confident in this program, that we already have students from other districts who have made application. In addition to that, this will help us to keep our students here and within the program because even though we are not officially CTE, the students who are in the program taking the course of studies, once we have the final approval, will be, that program will turn to CTE, and if they're in the program or applying to be in, they will get those course credits, they will have that university credit, and they'll be able to get the field experience.
Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'm sorry, I just want to, is there assurances from RIDE that you guys have written assurances that this is, this is something that makes sense?
Yes, and we have the preliminary, we have the checklist, we have the approval that we are RIDE CTE certified for culinary arts, and that's why, in due diligence, prior to coming here and prior to coming back to the school committee, we had the same official from RIDE come in, reaffirm the scope of the work. We are expecting a larger scope of work. They are checking to see where it might actually be a smaller scope of work to, again, meet the minimum qualifications for RIDE as a CTE.
In the timeline as well?
Yes, and I feel confident about that. I feel that working with the school, the teachers are aware that we're looking forward to going forward with this project, as is the administration and, of course, the school committee, that we will be able to seal off that on the day that school shuts and really begin work, if needed, to do work. We would be able to relocate the classrooms that are in that hallway to another part of the school so that they would not be affected, should there be any pre-construction work that needs to be done, and that's what I'm planning on.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion that the Town Council approve the attached negotiation cost proposal from SLAM Architectural Services not to exceed $205,400 and authorize the Smithfield Public School Department to enter into a contract with SLAM for the proposed work.
Have a second.
Second.
Any more discussion? Any non-holders in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ahs, ahs.
Thank you.
Item J, consider to discuss the act upon request of qualifications for a consultant to update the town's needs assessment and develop an impact fee report. An impact fee schedule.
I think I had asked for this because apparently our impact fees hadn't been changed for 10 years, so we need to look at them again. And I, I'm assuming this is the process we have to go through. We have to actually hire a firm to, to look at them.
Yeah. The councilman I had, he's correct. This is the RFP to go out, so we can, we have to go through that process of determining what these fees are going to be. And as the councilman said, it's been a while, so it's time.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Ayes, ahs, ahs. Number K, consider to discuss the act upon approving tax abatements in the amount of
So moved.
So moved. We have a second. Any discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ahs, ahs. Item L, consider to discuss the act upon possible appointments to the Charter Review Commission.
Madam, sorry, Mr. President, motion to approve the following appointees for the Charter Review Commission. Number one, Adam LaGreca. Number two, Dennis Sakosha. Number three, Emilio Collantonio. Number four, Ernie Almonte. Number five, Jamie Sabellico. Number seven, Kerry Lawton. Number nine, Robert Randall. Number 10, Thomas Hodgkins. Number 11, I'm sorry, I wasn't counting that right. I'm reading that wrong. I'm so sorry, I'm reading the wrong numbers. My apologies. Let me remake that. Adam LaGreca, Dennis Sakosha, Emilio Collantonio, Ernie Almonte, Jamie Sabellico, Kerry Lawton, Robert Randall, Thomas Hodgkins, Russell Marcela.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes, ahs, ahs. Item M, consider to discuss the act upon authorizing the Smithfield Fire Department to purchase through the MA State Pricing Agreement, PSE01, for two Hearst drawers of life tools of Fire Medic Supply Company, Inc. of Milford, Massachusetts, in the amount of $63,494 to be paid for out of the Fire Department's capital budget communication.
That is from the fire chief. I think there was actually a misprint in the agenda. We're actually purchasing four tools in the memo that I sent out. So, but this is a, this would be the second phase of a two-year project that we started back in 2023. This would basically bring our drawers units up to the new technology, everything battery-operated, they're working hydraulic tools, it's a lot safer operation for us and the people that we're serving.
Sorry, what was the change?
So in the memo, it was from four. And the agenda has listed as two.
You need two, right?
What's the correct one?
You need four.
Four.
You may only get two, didn't it?
I'm going to see where it says.
You may have to go for another two in the next meeting.
For that price, it better be awful.
Yeah.
And you're replacing four old ones?
Hang on one second, chief.
Yeah, yeah. So two years going, 2023, we replace the units on our two engines, and this will replace all the tools on our ladder job now. And that includes the mounts and everything else that goes with it. And it actually includes lifetime training of the tools and lifetime warranty as well.
Nice. Lifetime warranty?
Yeah. If they break it, they come and swap it out.
I don't even get that.
As long as the company's in business, we get it.
Let me just make sure, you got the cutter?
Two cutters.
Two cutters and two spreaders.
Yep.
And just as the chief said, we had, this was a two-year project. And just as the chief said, we had, this was a two-year project we did and we actually allocated $45,000 last year, $45,000 this year, but there's just enough cap, this is the last item, it'll come out of capital. We have just enough for this project and all the other payments remain in capital. So that, this is, this utilizes the rest of this year's capital money that was allocated.
Okay. So we're going to change the motion to four, not to, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Entertainer motion.
Motion to approve as amended.
You have a second. Any discussion?
So the, the total cost is $63,494.
Yes.
$45,000 was allocated for this fiscal year.
Right.
And $45,000 for the last fiscal year?
Right.
Was that spent, the last fiscal?
No, last year we spent with 30, around 31, 32, something like that. And we didn't spend all the money this year for turnout gear. So the difference, last year we did, we're not even applying it this year, just we have enough money in the capital budget and this will be the final.
So there is enough money.
In this year's budget, correct.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Nays, ayes have it. Number 12, public comment. Anyone like, from the public, like the comment? Hearing none, motion to adjourn? You have a second. All in favor? Aye. Nay?